The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line.
So hello everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order and can we get a roll call please?
Yes, Commissioner Bossert.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter. I see some people entering. Just give me one moment, please.
Very good.
Commissioner Carpenter, are you, are you joining us?
I'm trying to.
Perfect. We're doing a roll call. So if you will go ahead and announce that you are attending the meeting and do a quick camera check for us. That would kill two birds with one stone.
I am attending the meeting. Good morning or evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Commissioner Dunn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Tomacek. Would you do a roll call check for us and a camera check?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Commissioner Mayo.
I am here.
Good evening. Thank you. Commissioner Zhang, are you able to hear us? Commissioner Zhang, you are unmuted and I can hear some background noise, but not necessarily your voice.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, sir. Thank you. Would you mind doing a quick camera check as well?
Yes, let me see if I know how to work this laptop.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Calling, I don't think she's joined us yet. And Commissioner Torres. Roll call is complete.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn over the proceedings to Rita McConnell. I believe she has an agenda.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, welcome to the pre-meeting. We haven't done these for a while. You know, with COVID, we thought we could just go directly into our meetings because it probably wouldn't last very long in terms of doing virtual meetings, but that has not been the case unfortunately. So we definitely want to start doing the pre-meetings. It's a good source of information that we can share with planning commission on a variety of topics, but not related to actual land use cases that are coming before you. But we certainly have other topics that we'd like to touch base with you on a regular basis. So thanks for making time in your schedule to accommodate these again. At this point in time, we only have about 10% occupancy in city offices. We did shut it down for about three or four weeks, but now we're slowly introducing staff to the city offices and we are going to be making adjustments as the data demonstrates that we can do so safely. So we're nowhere near going forward with public hearings live at this time, but we are starting to introduce staff again to the office. So for these meetings, we really like to use this as an opportunity to check in with you, see how things are going. We've been using this virtual format for quite some time. We've worked through some kinks. There's probably some other kinks that we still need to work through. I know sometimes it feels, you know, like it's not as smooth as it can be, you know, checking in procedures always can be interesting with internet connectivities, but you guys have been patient with that. I just want to touch base and see if you all had any concerns that you want to bring to our attention, whether it's tonight or reaching out to Jen in the future and maybe, you know, shooting some emails or there are things that we can problem solve to make this a smoother process for you. I did notice one time with motions that maybe it was a little less seamless than it could have been. So I just wanted to make sure that we are also providing the information to you to do those motions smoothly. So if you have any concerns with that, certainly reach out to Jen. The other thing that I noticed is in one particular meeting, I know that we had a little bit more dialogue going on in the meeting and I think that's kind of a function of citizens not really maybe knowing how to handle sometimes the public commentary time. I think that, you know, running the meetings the way you did before we did virtual meetings is exactly the way you need to be running them. And if you feel like things are not going according to that process, feel free to interject and make it happen basically. Kristin and I are also, Kristin Decker and I are also available and we might interrupt meetings just to make sure that you are afforded the opportunity to have proper procedures followed in these virtual meeting formats. One thing that came to mind is, and that we haven't done, and I don't know, you know, when we're going to ever do it again in the future, but I wanted to make sure that you had the tools available to entertain executive sessions. And that's something that council is already doing in their council meetings. So I would like Jennifer Baden to talk to you, should that need ever arise, about how you would actually introduce conducting an executive session. So Jennifer, if you have availability at this time, maybe to talk about that?
Yes, thank you, Rita. So in everybody's packet that they received, you should have gotten a script protocol that addresses the newly implemented protocols and procedures for a planning commission executive session if one of you should request such. And I'd like to just remind everybody that there is some specific language that needs to be used during an executive session. If you are a commissioner that needs the legal advice on your protocol on page one, it is highlighted. We are asking that you, you read this exactly as it's laid out for you here. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under CRS section 24-6-402-4B. And then we will need a second motion to that and then five out of seven commissioners must vote yes on that motion. Once the executive session has been confirmed, we will all log out of the current go-to webinar that we are in. We were, are going to ask you to log out completely and totally. Make sure you're no longer in that meeting. The live stream will continue that the public will hear it will just be silenced. There will be a slide up letting them know that we are in executive session. And as you can see on the script protocol, another meeting that is password protected has been created. And this will be used in a similar platform using go-to meeting. It's a little bit of a smaller platform. And there is a passcode that you will need to put in. And we were, we are asking that you make sure before you join that meeting, that you are in a space that is completely private. No one else is in that space with you. And to join the meeting that way. There is a little bit of a difference here in an executive session meeting. Commissioners and staff will be on camera the entire duration of the meeting. So based on the protocol, you can see the chair will call for another vote in the mix of an executive session. If the same commissioner that moved for the executive session in the live meeting, can please make sure they make that motion again and the same commissioner that seconded, then we're just being transparent there. We'll call for the motion, the second chair will call the vote and then commissioners, while you're on camera, you'll unmute and cast your vote. The chair will then officially call the executive session meeting to order and ask for a roll call. I will do a roll call as we normally doing, do during our live meeting. And then the chair will state that the, all commissioners are present. Deputy City Attorney will invite the commissioner who motioned for the executive session to speak. And the discussion will begin. And once the discussion is complete, we'd like you to remember to please log out of the go-to meeting executive session completely before logging back into the planning commission meeting on go-to webinar. There will only be, in addition to yourselves, the deputy city attorney in the meeting, myself as technical assistants. And the two other staff members will be Jacob Kaza, the planner, and John McConnell, principal planner, will be the only ones attending the executive session. Having said all of that, does anybody have any questions about the, how to move into executive session, the motion, switching formats, if you will? We realize that this might take a few minutes, so we will be patient in allowing everybody to make the transition from one platform to another. So any questions that I can answer? Going once?
Jennifer.
Yes, Commissioner.
So we would call an executive session if we didn't know the legality of a certain question?
Correct. If, if you're questioning something and needing specific legal advice, that's when you would move to go into an executive session.
And we would just click on the blue link that you have in this email?
Yes, you can click on the link or you can, the numbers that are highlighted at the end of the link, and I'm not going to say them out loud, but those numbers that are highlighted, you can put that meeting ID number into go-to meeting as well. You can do either one. Click on the link or enter the code, if you will.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Calling, I see that you have joined us. Would you please do a quick mic check, camera check for us?
Hi there. I'm here. Sorry I'm late.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you. So any other questions regarding executive session? Okay, while I do have the floor, if any of you have any training requests for this upcoming year, specifically in the next few months, we do not have any items being requested for public hearing in February or March. And so I'm happy to entertain getting some training together for you guys, same as we did the Home Depot site last year. We can put a 30-minute session on. So if anybody has any specific sites or any training that you think would be beneficial, please feel free to email me and we can get that scheduled. And that's all I've got at the moment. I'm going to turn it back over to Rita.
Thank you, Jennifer. So yeah, next I'd like to cover city council updates. Recall the sign code, you all recommended approval for that not too long ago. That did go to city council in December and we did get excellent approval of that. I say excellent because it was a lot of votes in our favor. It's nice to see seven to zero votes at council. So they appreciated the work that you did and making your recommendation and all the work that staff did. A lot of people played a role in that. Dave Gorman in particular was a superb leader in getting that through this process. So we now have a new sign code. That one, that land ordinance or land development related ordinance went to planning commission. Not all of them do. We, we kind of pick which ones we should bring to you for input. We did have a mail notification ordinance, sorry, that went to city council that didn't go to you in the past, but that went directly to council. That would be one of the ones that could have bypassed planning commission. And what that did is change our notification by mail to adjacent properties from 300 feet to 500 feet for most land development applications, not including variances. Variances, we kept it to 300 feet because typically those are smaller scale requests, typically a single lot residential development. And we were comfortable with keeping that at 300 feet. A number of staff participated in developing this recommendation. Andrew Spurgeon worked with Jennifer Baden to do a lot of research on benchmarking our nearby jurisdictions. We have 11 of them. And what we like to do is when we change our code, kind of see what other jurisdictions are doing. We don't want to do something too far out of the range of what we're seeing other jurisdictions doing, especially when it comes to procedures such as mail notification. And what we found is that eight of the 11 jurisdictions had a 500-foot or less notification area. There were two that had a thousand-foot notification and one that had a 1500-foot notification. Regarding variances, it was eight out of 11 that had a 300-foot or less notification area. And then three had 500-feet notification. So we were very comfortable with recommending that we go from 300 feet to 500 feet for most of our land development applications and keeping variances at 300 feet. And city council agreed. Again, we got a seven to zero vote on that last evening. I think what was important to recognize in that conversation, at least from, you know, my opinion, is that this is the mandatory notification. We also have signs and newspaper publications, which you're all familiar with. But there's a lot of public notification that goes on behind the scenes that you may not be as familiar with. For example, we have developed a new webpage that is devoted to depicting some of the more common or I guess the more, QuickTrip is one of them. Uplands is another one. The more commonly discussed applications among staff on the website so that the citizens can take a look at those projects without going through our more formal login for e-track it to look at development projects. This allows people to just go to the website and see a snapshot of the project. And I think that provides notification to a lot of people who might not otherwise be aware of development projects that are going on and they can see if there's upcoming neighborhood meetings or if there's planning commissioner, city council hearings. Another tool that we've been using, and it's, it's not a rule to use this tool, but it's a way to get the word out when we are starting to hear from citizens, hey, tell me more about these projects, keep me better informed, is our social media, Facebook, Twitter and Nextdoor. And that gets outreach to a lot of people. You know, I know when Uplands was going through the comprehensive plan update, there were a number of posts there. I think there was like 15 total. So that gets the word out to a lot of people well beyond the scope that we can do in our mandatory notifications. HOAs is also another great resource, you know, if an HOA is included or if a property is included in a notification area and it's part of an HOA, you know, we would send them a notice, but then that HOA could then send that out to the rest of the neighborhood. So that opens up more notification. And then at any time, an individual or a special group can request to be part of our notification, either by email or a mailing, typically an email. And a lot of times when people go to neighborhood meetings, you know, word of mouth spreads and they might reach out to the planner and say, hey, include me on that list. So we have a very extensive notification that goes well beyond our mandatory requirements. And I, for me, it was really good to remind myself that this is how we get more people involved, you know. Of course mandatory is good, but then we have other ways of doing it. Anyway, that was approved and we're going to implement that as soon as it's effective. Any questions on that notification? Okay. Is there anything that planning commissioners want to discuss? We have, you know, a few minutes remaining, probably want to take a bio break before the meeting starts, but is there anything else that you would like to discuss that's related to some of the process, questions that might have come up in the past? Okay. Well, I think, oh wait, there's one more thing. Sorry. You thought we were going to be able to move on. I did want to let you all know that there is a neighborhood meeting coming up next week for the Uplands because you're probably going to hear about it. And that is on the 26th and 27th. It's going to be in the virtual meeting format. And this is for the master ODP. So recall, we've already gone through the comprehensive plan. And we are in the process of reviewing the PDP that has not been scheduled for public hearings at this point. But the master ODP is something that is run concurrently, in this case with the PDP. And now we're having the neighborhood meeting on that. All right, now I'm ready to turn it back over.
Chairperson Bossert, if I may, could I do a quick sound check with Commissioner Torres and the remaining applicant team?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Torres, good evening. Would you do a quick mic check and camera check for us, please?
Yes, I don't know if you can hear me and see me now.
We can do both. Thank you very much. And let's see, from the applicant team, Angela, would you do a quick mic check for us?
Hello.
Good evening. Thank you very much. And Mike Talcott, would you do a quick mic check for us?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. And so I show three members from the applicant team. Is that correct?
You should have two additional members. This is Carolyn. You should have Curtis Rowe and Aaron McLean.
I don't see them yet. They're not, they haven't joined us yet. Okay, I'll look for those other two names and I'll move them over when, when they join. Oh, here comes Aaron. I see him right now. Here's Aaron. We'll get him in.
Okay.
Good evening, Aaron. Would you do a quick mic check for us?
Sure can. How's that sound?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So Chairperson Bossert, it's 6:52. Would you like to do a quick drink break, bathroom break and reconvene at, if we can, maybe right about 6:58, 6:59? So we all can be back in our seats right about seven o'clock and call it to order?
That sounds very good. Let's all do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Curtis. Staff and the rest of your applicant team are on a quick break here. But since you're join, just joining us, I'd like to do a quick mic check with you if you wouldn't mind, please.
Yes, welcome. Yes, so thank you. Um, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. We should be back in maybe one minute or so or anytime here. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
This is Chairman Bossert. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Bossert. Chairperson Bossert.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner calling.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Present.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call is complete.
Okay, we have seven commissioners in attendance tonight, so alternates will not be voting. Forum is present and all members will be voting except for alternates. I'd like to see a motion for the approval of the minutes for the December eighth meeting. Do we have anyone who can do that?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, so David and Tracy and all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Jennifer, I should ask, do we need a roll call on that or can we do it voice vote?
Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Ed, you need me to call the roll or do you do it?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Chairperson Bossert.
Aye.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Aye.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner calling.
Aye.
Commissioner calling is in favor. Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek.
Aye.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Vote is complete.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. Thanks to everyone. Uh, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, comments were accepted electronically and by voicemail and were delivered to the planning commission and posted on the public agenda. Those who wish to speak and give comments have signed up in advance and we have one speaker tonight so far. That person will be allowed to speak during the public hearing. There's only one item on this evening's agenda and that's the public hearing in action on the preliminary development plan for the Quick Stop Store number four two zero one. Mr. Kaza, are you ready to make your presentation?
I am.
Very good.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jacob Kaza. I'm a planner with the city's planning division. Tonight, I'd like to introduce all of the city's staff who are with us to um, for the meetings. That way you will know who is joining us. Uh, let me see, starting from the top, we have Heath Klein, that's our transportation engineer. Jennifer Bodden is our planning aide. John McConnell, our principal planner. John Van is from Parks, Recs and Libraries and he's one of the landscape architects. Kristen Decker and she's a city attorney, as you well know. And Rita McConnell, the planning manager. And that wraps up all of the staff who are on this call. Next slide, please. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation and the public notices mailed, posted and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The posted notices exceeded the minimum quantity and period of posting required. The the notices of the public hearing were mailed to sixty-four property owners and HOAs within one thousand feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website and the city's newsletter. Next slide, please. Here's a map of the proposed development. The subject property is bordered by Sheridan Boulevard on the east, West Hundred and Fourth Avenue on the south and the City Park Complex on the north and west. QuickTrip is proposing to develop a gas station and convenience store on the east side of the property with a portion of the west side available for potential future development. Next slide. Section eleven five fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains ten criteria that are to, that are to be considered when reviewing new preliminary development plans. Criteria one through three require that the PDP conform with the city's comprehensive plan and all city codes, ordinances and policies. The PDP is of sound, creative, innovative and efficient planning principles and any exceptions from city code must be warranted and clearly identified on the PDP. Staff finds that the PDP is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The property is designated retail commercial by the comprehensive plan. Under that designation, auto service stations, convenience stores and drive-through facilities are listed as limited use and may not be allowed in areas that directly abut residential districts, public quasi-public or institutional uses or public spaces. This property is bordered with public uses on all four sides. The most prominent use, City Park, is a central gathering space for the community and this property acts as a gateway to that space. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan identifies City Park as the centerpiece of the city's expanding open space and park system. The comprehensive plan further states, when permitted, such facilities shall use enhanced architectural design standards to be compatible with surrounding uses. Considering the surrounding context, any proposed architectural enhancements to this proposed use would be inconsequential to address the impacts of this use in this location. In regards to criteria two, staff finds that the PDP does not exhibit the application of sound, creative, innovative and efficient planning principles when put in context of the location of this site to the adjacent public uses. The applicant is asking for one exception to the retail commercial design guidelines. In their phasing plan, the applicant is requesting to be able to build their gas station in the first phase. A gas station of the proposed configuration is considered a pad site and per the retail commercial design guidelines, pad sites should not start construction until fifty percent of the non-pad site construction has begun. Staff finds that the requested exception is not warranted by virtue of design or special amenities incorporated in the development proposal. Next slide, please. Criteria four through six require that the PDP is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private development in the surrounding area, provides the development and surrounding areas from protection of potentially adverse influences and has no significant adverse impacts upon existing or future land uses, nor upon the future development of the immediate area. Staff finds that the PDP is not compatible and harmonious with existing public development in the surrounding area. As further elaborated in the staff analysis on criteria one, this site is directly adjacent to multiple public uses. The architectural form of the proposed uses is not complementary or compatible with the existing public development. In regards to criteria five, staff finds that the PDP does not provide the surrounding areas from potentially adverse influence from within the development. As noted in the staff analysis on criteria one, the site serves as a gateway to an important city public space and the uses and architecture of the proposed use pose the risks, the risk of adverse influence on that public space. Staff also finds that the PDP provides the potential to create significant adverse impacts to existing land uses in the immediate area. Criteria seven through ten, oh, sorry, next slide. Thank you. Criteria seven through ten require that transportation access points are designed in a safe and harmonious manner. The city may require right-of-way or other public lands as a condition of the PDP approval. Performance standards are included that offer a reasonable expectation from future ODPs to meet the Westminster Municipal Code eleven five fifteen standards for approval that that, that the applicant is not in default or does not have any outstanding obligations to the city. Staff finds that the proposed access points requested in the PDP are not designed in a safe manner, that they will interrupt the flow of traffic on the streets and that they create a hazard for vehicles and pedestrian traffic. Staff do not support the requested access point on Sheridan Boulevard and one of the access points on West Hundred and Fourth Avenue. In regards to criteria eight, nine and ten, staff finds that the right-of-way acquisition has not been identified at this point in the development process, that the PDP includes the necessary performance standards and that the applicant is not in default and has not, and has no outstanding obligations to the city. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed PDP does not meet several of the criteria for approval. Specifically, in criteria one, the PDP is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan designation of retail commercial and its limitations on auto service stations, convenience stores and drive-through facilities that directly abut public uses and public spaces as further discussed in criteria one on the staff memo. Next slide, please. Staff finds that a denial of the application would meet the city council's strategic plan goals of vibrant, inclusive and engaged community and beautiful, desirable, safe and environmentally responsible city. The city and the applicant hosted an effective neighborhood meeting during the pandemic. Denial of the application would protect a valuable public space from adverse impacts. Next slide. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed preliminary, preliminary development plan and that the planning commission recommend the city council deny the proposed PDP with the finding that the PDP does not meet the criteria set forth in section eleven five fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention. There are several staff members with us this evening. We would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chair, are you ready for us to begin the applicant presentation?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, members of city staff and members of the public who might be joining us virtually this evening. Uh, my name is Carolyn White. I'm Land Use Counsel for the applicant and we're here tonight to request your recommendation of approval for the QuickTrip PDP application. If I could have the next slide, please. I'll start by introducing our team. With us this evening, representing QuickTrip is Mike Talcott. Also, myself from Brownstein High at Farber and Shrek on the legal side. From planning, we have Erin McLean from Galloway and our traffic engineer Curtis Rowe from Kimley Horn. All of these folks are party, planning to be part of the presentation this evening and also will be available to answer any questions you have at the appropriate time. Next slide, please. Tonight, we request your approval, recommendation of approval of the PDP for the development of the QuickTrip. Um, I also will mention and we'll talk about this a little bit later that there is an existing PDP that was previously approved in nineteen ninety-two for this site called the Hewitt-Hawn PDP. And um, we'll be mentioning a couple of features of that PDP and how they are carried forward in this PDP that's being proposed this evening. Uh, perhaps it's no surprise to the commissioners that we must respectfully disagree with staff's assessment that the proposed PDP does not meet the criteria and we intend to show you this evening why it does meet the applicable criteria in the code and is consistent with the applicable comprehensive plan provisions as well as the previously approved PDP while at the same time bringing this site up to the current PDP standards on a technical level. But before we get started talking about the code issues and the criteria, since QuickTrip is new to the Denver metro market and this is the first public hearing on a QuickTrip project, I'd like to first introduce Mike Talcott, the real estate manager, excuse me, real estate project manager with QuickTrip to provide a brief overview of who QuickTrip is and what kind of facilities they operate in particular, what type of facility they are planning to operate here if this PDP is approved. Mike?
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, Mr. Chairperson Commissioners, uh, good evening. Thank you for your time. Uh, if I could have the next slide, please. Just a few facts about QuickTrip. As Carolyn alluded to, we are new to the Denver area. We currently have over thirty sites in development. We currently have over 30 sites in development in the Denver metro. This is one. Just a few facts. 15 years on Fortune's list of 100 best companies to work for in America. If that's just to make sure you're familiar with what that is, Fortune puts out anonymous questionnaires to store employees, corporate employees, anyone from the corporation, and asks them to be honest and frank in the rating of their employer. I'm proud. We're 100 best companies to work for year after year. All locations are owned and operated by QuickTrip. We were founded in 1958 and still family-owned. This is not a franchise. We are all corporately run. That allows us to maintain a high level of professionalism and keep the ship going the right way. Perennially listed on Forbes' Top 100 Privately Held Companies, we're currently in number 29. On average, each one of our stores create 22 new jobs per store. Excuse me. We have never laid off employee in the history of the company. Our average store manager earns $100,000 per year, and an entry-level assistant manager starting pay is $50,000 per year. Now, notably also, along with that comes health insurance benefits, 401K, employee stock ownership, paid vacation time, and paid sick time. We contribute 5% of its profits to charitable organizations in the communities in which we operate. Now, that's 5% local. Really neat thing about this is that once we get a certain amount of store saturation in the neighborhood or in a municipality, a board of store employees is appointed that actually gets to suggest and decide where that 5% goes. So that does keep it local. We are a national safe place location for endangered youth. I'll go to the next slide. A little bit about the Safe Place program. We share a vision of safe neighborhoods and communities. That's why we partner with Safe Place. We designate all of our stores as Safe Place sites for at-risk youth. Safe Place is a national nonprofit organization, provides safety for trouble or threatened youth since 1991. We've been a designated Safe Place where runaways and at-risk youth can come in off the street, receive food, drink, and wait for a volunteer from the Safe Place Agency partner to come in and actually take care of them. I've started in the stores. I had people come in and utilize this feature. My job as a store employee was to make sure they literally felt safe. Get them a place usually in the back room to sit and calm down, relax, get them something to eat, put them at ease, and wait for the actual trained professional to show up. Next slide, please. We are proud to support our military families, employees, and customers. We partner with the Folds of Honor to provide scholarships to military families in the cities where we operate stores, commissaries, and distribution warehouses. This is also a personal pride point for me, is my oldest son is in the Air Force. So I'm glad to be a part of that. Next slide, please. Oh, I think we went one too many. There we go. Thank you. Store security features. We're committed to providing the very best security features for our employees and customers. QuickTrip Corporation is widely considered the best in the industry due to the commitment in providing a safe operation. Every square inch of the QT property will be under video surveillance. Along with that, in our store layout and design, we pay special attention to lighting, to blind corners, to angles, just trying to make sure that our property, our sites, are as safe as they possibly can be. Next slide, please. Inside of our stores, we actually have a full-service made-to-order kitchen. And that's just one shot of it. Next slide, please. Just some of the food items that are prepared fresh in the store daily and on display for grab-and-go. As you can see, we have, well, we have tried to keep up with the times and have plenty of healthy food options: yogurt, fruit, salads. You know, not just the typical junk food. Next slide, please. Some more of our fresh food offer. Next slide, please. In the made-to-order kitchen, top left, we have tacos. Top right, barbecue sandwiches, beef, pork, and chicken. Bottom left is made-to-order sub-sandwiches, and bottom right, of course, made-to-order pizza. Next slide, please. These are just four different shots of the, what I call, on-top food-drink options that we have. Top left is fresh brewed teas, black teas, green teas, chai teas. Very wide selection, very popular. Top right is both hot and cold cappuccino drinks. Bottom left, frozen drinks. And then on the bottom right is our coffee bar, which has, besides the regular coffee, we usually have a Colombian. And then there's a flavor of the month that rotates in as well, but all very good and fresh brewed. Next slide, please. And I think this is where I turn it over, back over to Carolyn.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Carolyn White again, for the record. I'd like to turn now to just orienting you a little bit to the site, although what you're looking at here, the actual sort of aerial of the site plan, typically you might not see until we get to the ODP stage. This is meant to illustrate how the proposed use is going to be laid out on the site for purposes of the PDP. This site has a couple of very unusual characteristics. First of all, it's here on the northwest corner of 104th and Sheridan, and I'm missing a zero in that first bullet. Apologies. It's 104th, not 14th. It is a non-geometric shape. It doesn't have corners like a typical retail commercial corner would have. You see, it's got a rounded shape headed up towards the rec center on the northwest there, and then on the southeast corner is where the existing city drainage infrastructure is located that encumbers the site, not only with a significant easement and with physical improvements, but there's also a dramatic topographical change from north to south, from west to east on the site, such that of the total 5.66 acres of the site, a much smaller portion than that is actually developable in a meaningful way. And as such, the variety of uses that are potentially, that could locate on this site and make good use of it, are limited. This is a challenging site. And we think that QuickTrip has designed, and Galloway has designed, a way to use this site in a compatible fashion that actually takes advantage of the positive features of the site and navigates these challenges successfully while meeting the standards in the city code. Next slide. Next slide, please. There we go. Staff already outlined the PDP standards for approval. We will refer to them again in abbreviated fashion throughout our presentation. I won't repeat them back to you. As I mentioned, we acknowledge city staff reached a different conclusion in their analysis, but our analysis concludes that the proposed PDP does in fact meet the requirements, both for the PDP and for the comp plan and for the applicable Retail Commercial Design Guidelines. And while we're on this slide talking about city documents, I want to just mention two quick things to keep in mind. I know you, as planning commissioners, are well-versed in this, and that is, we're talking about an allowed use. The principal issue that city staff takes with our proposal is whether or not this use is appropriate to be located in this location. And the source for their basis for recommending denial of why this use should not be allowed is the fact that a convenience store and gas station is designated as a limited use in the comprehensive plan. But this site has zoning. It has PUD zoning, and that PUD allows commercial uses as they were in B1 at the time of the PUD approval. And the zoning is what sets the use. The PDP is intended to lay out how the site plan will go and how it fits within the criteria of the code as to the layout, but the uses are established by the zoning. And it's hard to imagine how the comp plan can take away a use that is allowed by the underlying approved zoning. And that's an issue that we'll keep coming back to throughout this presentation because it's really the basis for our difference of opinion in our conclusion of compatibility versus the staff's conclusion and recommendation of denial. Next slide. When you look on the left side of this chart, we're listing in abbreviated format the code standards for approval of the PDP, and none of these relate to use. These relate to how the site is going to be laid out, how the use is going to be occupying the site and functioning on the site, but it does not talk about the use, other than the reference to the comprehensive plan. And on the right-hand side of this, we have set forth how we believe that this proposal, this PDP, meets each of these criteria. Next slide. This does the same thing with the Retail Commercial Guidelines. Again, not listing each and every one of the 20-some pages of the Retail Commercial Guidelines, but the key ones that are applicable here in terms of how they apply to this particular site. Some of the issues listed here, such as landscaping and signage, are issues which are typically not addressed until you get to later stages of the development at the ODP or the final plan. Next slide. In a moment, we're going to focus on some of the key areas where our analysis differs from that of staff's. And many of these criteria focus on the concept of compatibility. Obviously, as staff has noted in its report, staff believes that this use is not compatible with this location or with the surrounding uses. So I want to take a moment to just talk about what is compatibility. Compatibility does not mean the same as. In other words, the only use which would be compatible here is not another recreation center or additional city open space. Rather, compatibility refers to the ability of two things which are not the same to nonetheless coexist in harmony in proximity to each other without creating negative impacts on each other. Uses that maintain the character of surrounding development in terms of intensity of use, height, and massing would be considered compatible in most common interpretations of that term as it relates to comprehensive plan and planning in general. We intend to demonstrate how this use is indeed compatible with the nearby city's recreation facility and City Park Fitness Center. In fact, that was one of the major attractions why QuickTrip selected this location in the first place. This facility will cater to the needs of the patrons of those existing facilities, as well as the needs of travelers on nearby Sheridan and 104th. From a design perspective, although again, a detailed look at architecture is really premature at the PDP stage, we have indeed designed this facility in a manner to be compatible with the architecture of the adjacent uses, and you'll see that in a few moments when we show you those slides. Now, I'd like to introduce Aaron McLean to talk in a little bit more detail about the site and to highlight some key features of the PDP. Next slide, please, and Aaron.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Carolyn, for the introduction. Well, members of the commission and staff. Yeah, what I'd like to do is just kind of dive a little bit more into the PDP document itself and discuss some of the performance standards that we have implemented into the document. You know, in staff's report, they point out a lot of items that are, you know, more non-compliant. We want to show how we are in compliance with the comp plan and the Retail Commercial Design Guidelines. Just like to also reiterate too, as Carolyn pointed out, and staff has mentioned in their staff report, you know, this PDP is really the zoning document that sets the use of the premise broad terms. The next phase is the ODP should that PDP get approved. And to this point, we have not submitted any formal site plan. What we have here tonight before you is a high-level concept plan that is based off of surveying and known information that we have from field reconnaissance work that understands part of our due diligence, the best layout for this site, and really the function of the surrounding developments and the adjacent street network and how that all ties into, which we can speak to more later in this presentation. Next slide, please. The performance standard established within the QuickTrip PDP, we're crafting in close coordination with staff. It did take us three reviews to get through the process to a hearing schedule. We are here tonight. As you have probably seen in the staff report, the two areas of concern or issues are the uses and the phasing, which we came to an impasse with staff. So throughout that process, though, we were able to work out the performance standards so that the intent there was that if the use and the phasing, you know, were to be deemed acceptable by the Planning Commission or in the city council, that a well-planned, high-quality, and aesthetically pleasing development would be allowed. With respect to the site planning of the performance standards within the Commercial Retail Guidelines, we need some of the sections of the site orientation, general project layout sections that are met. For instance, in the general project layout, this is not considered a strict development or linear development. That would not be allowed within this project. A sensible rile on primary entryway will be created with signage and landscaping features, which we'll show in future slides here as well. You know, some of this will also be accomplished through building placements you saw on our site plan at the corner of that intersection, as well as we often take into consideration through the site orientation process, which is on planning principles. As Carolyn pointed out, some of the site constraints and the grading issues and soul constraints that we use to, in coordination with our site planning efforts, to get a good understanding of how the site could function for the operations of QuickTrip Corporation. Next slide, please. Here, these are the view corridors that were preserved throughout the process. This is actually in the PDP document itself. It's page 5, I believe. This is something that was required as part of the seminal process and for evaluation by staff. You see here that the view corridor looking west at 104th at this intersection of Sheridan and 104th is being preserved in the sense that you can still see the Front Range Mountains, and the QuickTrip location is to north of that and away from obstruction. Next slide, please. And this is just another view this farther back or east, I guess, if you will, on 104th. You can go to the next slide, please. So some of the additional design guidelines or performance standards that we have implemented and kind of codified, if you will, in this PDP document are related to signage and lighting. And again, no lighting plan has been submitted to staff. There is a lot of discussion in the staff report that there is non-compliance issue due to lighting and canopy aesthetics. We haven't had an opportunity yet to present to staff how our lighting plan can be fit within this, the context of this surrounding area. Mike pointed out, we do a lot of these QuickTrip stores, and this, obviously, everyone's familiar with Dark Sky Nice and how that, you know, light pollution is a big thing along the front range, and that is something certainly that QuickTrip does comply with in other jurisdictions that they have gone through some processes. As far as architectural design, one of the other items too was, you know, of non-compliance, was that not providing enhanced architectural design standards, which in fact, our performance standards explicitly state that child is used to be allowed, that enhanced architectural standards will be required. Again, we've not provided those architectural standards in building elevation. We have concept renderings of what a typical QuickTrip looks like. However, those are concept level, which these can obviously be evolved into more substantial design that provide more stone and architectural compatibility to surrounding development. And so some of this, you know, the landscaping too will be provided compliance with the code. And one item too that we worked with through staff reviews was including an eight-foot masonry wall adjacent to the public property. In the site plan, you notice that there's proposed a potential for two different lots here. And on the west side is where the main city public facility is, and thus, you know, working with staff in that process, wanted to really require an eight-foot tall masonry wall. Now, the design guidelines, at least the Commercial Retail Design Guidelines, state that there is, you know, you can either do that or do this with burning and landscaping. We thought it would be more prudent to provide that actual wall to provide more of a buffering, a screening from any type of use that we propose on these in the QuickTrip PDP. Do the next slide, please, have some visuals of what this could look like. Here is the south, looking southwest at the intersection of 105th and Sheridan. This is the gateway entry that staff points out in their report to kind of enter into that section of the public facility. As you see here, the landscape wall, which is an architectural design wall, it may be structural. We don't know yet quite yet, but the point is that this design wall would be compatible with the wall to the north side of the road. If you go to the next slide, you can see what that existing wall looks like. This is a design thing that, in landscaping palette, that we intend to carry over to the QuickTrip property. And then the next slide here, briefly on the building architectural design theme. This is their brick. the building, architectural design theme. This is their brick mortar building that they provide. There's certainly some enhanced treatments that can be incorporated into this. Again, once we got into an ODP level planning set, we would work with staff through that process. Just to summarize, the design objectives and the related performance standards of the QuickTrip PDP. Provide enhanced architectural design standards. It relates to compliance with the retail commercial design guidelines, you know, also include landscaping, lighting standards for compliance with the code. With that, I would like to throw it back over to Carolyn White to move on with our presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Aaron. May I have the next slide, please? So what I'm going to do now is highlight the sort of four major categories of areas where we have a different analysis or a different conclusion than staff. Although I know in the staff report that has translated into seven out of the ten criteria, the fundamental difference is really based on four different matters where we have a different opinion. The first one has to do with the use of the property and whether or not it is appropriate to have this particular use in this particular location. And so the first thing I want to mention is back to that originally approved Hewitt-Hahn PDP back in nineteen ninety-two. This property is zoned PUD, and the uses approved in that PUD as expressed in the PDP from nineteen ninety-two are all of the uses which were allowed at the time in the B1 zoning under the city code. That includes gasoline station slash convenience store. This PDP, it's worth mentioning, was approved by the city as part of a transaction involving the dedication of land by Hewitt-Hahn to the city for a golf course, the settlement of some pending condemnation cases, and some other land exchange and development commitments. So this PDP is not only strong evidence that, at least since nineteen ninety-two, the city envisioned that this was an appropriate location for this type of use for a convenience store and fuel station, but also that PDP was approved as part of a package of a legal settlement of of a variety of legal disputes between the property owner and the city at that time. So while it is certainly true, as noted by staff, that in the city's comprehensive plan, under the retail commercial designation, it contains this following language. Auto service stations, convenience stores, drive-through, blah, 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 may be limited and may not be allowed in areas that directly abut residential districts, et cetera. We think this doesn't apply in this location for a variety of reasons. One, that use is already approved in this location. Two, I'm not sure it directly abuts any of those things since it's surrounded by roadways on all four sides, and I guess I would question the use of the word directly there. Next slide, please. But let's also kind of look at where it sits in relation to the city park and recreation facility that's been mentioned by staff as the sensitive public use that's immediately adjacent that's sought to be protected. As we showed you on the layout previously, the actual QuickTrip facility is at the northeasternmost corner of the property, approximately where that yellow pin is located. It's immediately adjacent to Sheridan and to One Hundred and Fifth to the north, which is the access entryway into the rec center. The other parcel, the as-yet undeveloped parcel, is immediately adjacent to the rec center building and to the rec center parking lot. None of this property is immediately adjacent to open space, recreation fields, natural areas, or any of the other sensitive components of the park. I'm also not familiar with any place in the comprehensive plan or the code where there's a discussion of gateways or particular special treatment for gateway areas. In fact, the idea that this was a gateway is something we learned for the first time in the staff report when it came out last week. Nonetheless, QuickTrip has designed this site in order to make it serve as an attractive amenity to that entranceway and to make the architecture of this facility be very compatible with the adjacent uses. The staff report also mentions the view corridor of Long's Peak as seen from the recreation center. And as you can see from this graphic, this facility will not be in between the recreation center and Long's Peak. Aaron showed you a moment ago what the Long's Peak view corridor looks like on One Hundred and Fourth, and that view corridor is indeed preserved. But there is no interference by this property in between the view of Long's Peak from the recreation center. Essentially, the recreation center building itself serves as a bit of a buffer between this property and the open space beyond and the views beyond. If you look at how the rec center is designed with the open windows and the exit areas facing out onto the park to the northwest. Aaron McLean also discussed the decorative masonry wall that's planned, which will be located in between the recreation center and the to-be-determined future development on parcel two. This will create additional separation between the uses, and parcel two itself actually buffers the QuickTrip facility from the recreation center. And then finally, I'll just mention that the language referenced on the previous slide in the comprehensive plan where it says that these uses may be limited in certain instances. As noted, we don't believe that this falls into those instances. Even so, it is a may, not a shall. In other words, this use is not prohibited in this location. That language indicates that the city may have some flexibility to prohibit or limit certain uses when they are in proximity to those other types of uses. As noted, we would argue that that doesn't apply, whereas here, we're talking about uses which have been allowed as part of a legal settlement and where the strict criteria don't actually apply. Next slide. The other factor to consider in determining the appropriateness of this use in this location has to do with the other types of similar uses in the vicinity, and there are some criteria in the retail design guidelines having to do with that, which don't even come into play here because the distances are so great. I'll just mention a couple of the public comments indicated that they believe there were too many fuel stations in close proximity to each other. One of them even said that they were less than a mile. But actually, this is, this graphic shows you the actual distances between all of the existing gas retailers in the area to the north, south, east and west, and all of them are located more than a mile away. Again, one of the reasons this site was selected by QuickTrip was for the fact that it's extremely convenient and adjacent to a use that is very compatible, and also that there are not other opportunities for people to buy these same products and services in close proximity to this location. Therefore, we would argue that denial of the PDP on the basis of the proposed use would not be appropriate. Next slide. So let's talk now about the access points. As was noted by staff, staff is indicating that with some exceptions, they believe that the access points proposed for this PDP are not safe, are not convenient, and will in fact create a hazard. I'm going to briefly give an overview of why we think that's not the case, and then I'd like to introduce our traffic engineer, Curtis Rowe, to provide you a little bit more detailed explanation of that issue. Just to orient you on this slide, what you see on the left is our proposed PDP, and the arrows in green highlight the four proposed access points. What you see on the right is the existing approved Hewitt-Hahn PUD from nineteen ninety-two and the approved access points. And so you can see, the only difference is that on One Hundred and Fourth, there are two proposed access points, one at the westernmost boundary of the property and one in between the property boundary and Sheridan. That's the only difference. The others are essentially the same. QuickTrip is requesting a full movement access point off One Hundred and Fifth Avenue, a right-in, right-out access point off Sheridan Boulevard, full access point off One Hundred and Fourth at the westernmost boundary, and a right-in, right-out in between the westernmost property boundary and Sheridan. Let's see, I'll just mention one more time, the Hewitt-Hahn PDP, there's actually a specific court order that addresses these access points, and I'm sure the property owner, if he's available and will speak during public comment, will explain that in more detail, but our analysis is that these accesses have already been approved by the city and that that approval cannot be withdrawn at this stage. So therefore, we believe that denial of the PDP based on these arguments about access would not be appropriate. And to talk to you in a little bit more detail about that, I'd like to ask Curtis Rowe to come up and unmute, and while he's doing that, we could just skip to the next slide, which I believe is a close-up of the Hewitt-Hahn PDP with specific descriptions of each of the proposed then-approved access points. And the next slide, which is a table comparing each of the access points. If you go to the next slide, please. Yeah, each of the access points, we just tried to lay out comparing, was it in the original PDP? Is it supported by the traffic study in terms of the technical analysis of its safety and capacity? Have we included it? Is it in our PDP? And then what is staff's position on it? So this is just a handy reference chart to compare the areas of difference among those four sources. With that, I'll ask to turn it over to Curtis, and I think we can go to the next slide.
Thanks, Carolyn. Good evening, everyone. I'm Curtis Rowe with Kim Lee Aron and Associates. I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of Colorado, and I'm also a nationally certified professional traffic operations engineer. And so my company and me provided the traffic impact study for this project. As provided within that traffic impact study, the gas station as well as the adjacent retail restaurant use that we assumed on block two would generate a total of two thousand two hundred and ninety-six new weekday daily trips, of which eighty-three and one hundred and thirty-nine of these would occur during the weekday morning and afternoon peak hours, respectively. This traffic generated by the gas station and adjacent retail restaurant lot will be successfully accommodated on the surrounding street network with plenty of reserved traffic capacity available. As identified and shown in the traffic study and from our operational analysis, there is no decrease in level of service. Much of this trip generation is passed by traffic. That's traffic that's already passing by the site today on the street network, and so this is a comparable use in terms of other allowed uses for trip generations for this site. And so the, the issue relative to the accesses, the proposed accesses, we believe, decrease rather than increase potential for safety conflicts. And so, next slide, please. Go through those quickly. Yep, so this is a sketch that shows the accesses that are requested. The access proposed for the development was appropriately designed with acceptable spacing to provide safe and convenient access without hazards for vehicles or pedestrians. The two right-in, right-out accesses proposed, there's the one there on Sheridan, and then the eastern one there on One Hundred and Fourth Avenue. Those two right-in, right-out accesses reduce the amount of travel on the surrounding street network and thereby reduce difficult turning movements at other intersections. For example, the Sheridan Parkway right-in, right-out access would reduce the traffic volume that would otherwise be forced to use One Hundred and Fifth Avenue to connect with Sheridan Parkway. Minimizing the traffic volume along this roadway will be a benefit for the existing park and recreation center to the north. Likewise, the Sheridan Parkway right-in, right-out access reduces the amount of southbound left-turn traffic at the One Hundred and Fourth Avenue stop-controlled full movement access. As this movement is more difficult from turning left at a stop sign along a major street, minimizing this traffic volume improves overall safety. Likewise, the One Hundred and Fourth Avenue right-in, right-out access shown, providing direct access along westbound One Hundred and Fourth Avenue, will reduce the amount of entering traffic from instead turning right onto Sheridan Parkway, then left on One Hundred and Fifth Avenue and into the site. So again, this reduces the amount of travel distance for vehicles on the adjacent streets, which is safer. It also reduces the amount of traffic, again, on One Hundred and Fifth Avenue, which provides the access to the park and recreational center. I'm happy to answer any additional questions at the appropriate time. So now I will turn this back over to Carolyn White.
Thanks very much, Curtis. Next slide, please, and Mr. Chairman, just in case you're wondering about the time, we are cruising into our conclusion here, so we're just about finished. I know that we've spoken a little longer than I think maybe has been intended, but we're just about to wrap up. So the last point that I wanted to make is to talk about this question of project phasing. And this is another area where we unfortunately have a disagreement with staff about what is the appropriate way for this site to develop. And staff has concluded that the proposed phasing plan with the QuickTrip facility being developed first and the remainder parcel being developed second is not appropriate, and they base that conclusion on this language from the retail commercial guidelines, which says that pad sites should not be developed until at least fifty, at least fifty percent of the non-pad portion of the property has begun construction. And because of this, in order to move forward at staff direction, we did request a PUD exception to deal with that. However, from our perspective, this project does not actually include any pad sites. This whole phasing issue really relies on reaching the conclusion that the proposed QuickTrip is a pad site, and it is not. Next slide. First, I'll just know that the code doesn't actually have a proper definition of a pad site. We looked to real estate industry sources, we looked to the way that this is commonly understood in the retail commercial development business, which I've been in for twenty-five years, and I think collectively on the team, we've probably got at least another twenty-five years amongst us, if not more. And most sources agree that what we're talking about with a pad site is something that is a freestanding single building, yes, but that sits in front of a mall, a shopping center, or some other larger facility where the pad site is really ancillary to that other facility. Lots of my clients develop lots of retail shopping centers, and we talk about the shopping center and the pad site, where maybe a bank or a restaurant might go. The whole purpose of this proposed development here is to develop the QuickTrip. The QuickTrip is not a pad site. It is the main development that is located here, and there is no plan to develop an adjacent shopping center or strip mall or anything else that would turn this into a pad site. So it's really not applicable to say that the phasing doesn't meet the fifty percent pad site requirement in the retail commercial guidelines. Even if the proposed QuickTrip facility were a pad, there are a couple issues with that. First of all, you have the ability to deviate from that standard if appropriate, if deemed appropriate, given factors such as small size, unusual shape, impracticality, or undesirability in the application of the guidelines. As we mentioned, this total property that we're dealing with here is five point six six acres. When you subtract out the parts that cannot be used, either because of the city's existing drainage facility or because of the topography, the actual parcel is actually smaller than five acres in terms of what is developable. Given that reduced area, the property is actually not suitable for very many different building forms and types. In fact, a single pad, if you accept that definition, is really all that can go on this property. This isn't a site where you can have a strip shopping center or some other type of multi-tenant building with any luck unless you maybe went vertical, and if you did that, you would be interfering with the view corridor. So for a variety of reasons, including the site constraints, the lack of a definition of a pad site, and the inapplicability of the phasing requirement in the retail commercial guidelines, we think that these guidelines do not apply here and that there really is no issue of non-compliance as it relates to the phasing. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, and I'll just briefly mention, I didn't address every single one of the seven criteria that staff explained in the staff report that they believe are not met. And that is because for some of those that I didn't address, the reason for arguing or concluding that they weren't met is because of one of these four areas where we have disagreement. So it really all boils down to the use, the access, and this pad site phasing issue. So therefore, our analysis concludes that the PDP meets all of the code standards. It is compatible with the comprehensive plan, it is compatible with the surrounding area, and that none of these issues identified by staff present a valid or appropriate obstacle to approval of the PDP. We therefore respectfully request your recommendation of approval, and our team is all available to answer any questions you might have. Next slide. We'll just leave with that visual as a reference point, and that concludes our presentation. Mr. Chairman, thanks for the opportunity to present.
Thank you for your very good presentation. Do we have any questions from the commissioners at this time? Either send Either send me a chat, or go ahead and turn on your mic. David Carpenter.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to thank staff and the applicant for producing very good, a very thorough presentation. I think that covers a lot of the issues between the memos and sets out the points. I want to ask staff, because the applicant brought up the point about may versus, may not be permitted for a gas station in this type of use versus shall. And I read the same thing, may not. And is that actually, I just want to verify with staff that that's actually, it is a may, because if it's a shall, then that changes the dynamics entirely. If it's a may, we may or may not. So that's my question for staff at this point.
Commissioner Carpenter, I can answer that. This is Jacob Kaza, the planner assigned to this case. So specifically, that was specifically about the comprehensive plan. And later on, if the questions aren't asked, I'll rebut several different things that the applicant brought up during their presentation. So specifically for the comprehensive plan, the city does have mandatory compliance with the comprehensive plan. In section 11-3-2 of the Westminster Municipal Code, if you'd like, I would be more than glad to bring up the text and read a verbatim to you about the mandatory compliance with the comprehensive plan. For this property, it is designated retail commercial. Attachment three of your packet is that designation and the specific language. And I'll read the sentence off for you. It says, "Auto service stations," and this is in the paragraph, "auto service stations, convenience stores, drive-through facilities, and other similar uses may be limited." So that's key, "may be limited," "and may not be allowed in areas that directly abut residential districts, public, quasi-public, or institutional uses or public space." So I see both the words "may not" and "may," "may be limited," and "may not be allowed." And so staff's opinion is that the city has the ability to not allow this use on this designation. And I'd like to point out that the city comprehensive plan does have a category that does allow for service commercial uses as an allowed use, a specific allowed use. That's the service commercial designation. In that category, we consider it an allowed use, and we would not put up this kind of test of what it's adjacent to. In this category, there is this test of adjacency, and the applicant has done a good job of laying out what the disagreements are. She's done a very good job of laying out the specific four things we disagree on, so.
If I can just tag on to that, this is Rena McConnell. The term "may" is really a discretionary to the judgment of the decision-maker as to whether it's an allowed use, taking all the facts into consideration.
Okay, great. That was the big question I had for staff at this time. I'll defer other comments until after the public hearing. Thank you.
Joe McConnell.
Thank you, Commissioner Bossert. So I have two questions for staff. First, when was the city rec. center completed?
Joe, this is Jacob Kaza here, Commissioner McConnell. I believe it was completed in 1997. You've probably lived here that long, so you might actually know the date better than me, but I can definitely look it up for you.
Did you say that because my hair is gray?
No, I just know you're a longtime community member.
Don't make it say why you think so.
Yeah, yeah, good point. And then, second, we've gone back and forth on, you know, pad site or not a pad site. Could staff provide a brief explanation as to why they think that it is a pad site?
Yeah, I can speak on that. Well, that was one of the items I wanted to speak about as well. So in the retail commercial design guidelines, and I can share that with the group if everybody wants to see it, or I could just quote it off verbatim. On page four, which would be under Site Planning, General Project Layout and Design, item number three, this is where the limitation of pad sites comes in on how many you can have in a development. And it says, "The number of pad sites," and then in parentheses, it says, "freestanding unconnected buildings" in parentheses, "or the number of lots for freestanding buildings," and that's "for freestanding buildings" is in parentheses, "is limited to a max of one pad site per five acres of the total development." So that is staff's interpretation. This is very consistent with how we've interpreted pad sites all across the city for retail commercial designations.
All right, thank you. That's all I had. Commissioner Bossert.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. One of the public comments was asking if this was in the 100-year floodplain, and the resident did not know. I'd like to know if staff can answer that question.
Yeah, Chairperson Bossert, this is Jacob Kaza here again. I can answer that. A portion of the site is in the 100-year floodplain, but that portion is down where the creek is. It's limited, constrained just down in the very bottom of the creek. They have a grading plan, I believe it's sheet three or sheet four of the PDP, and that's attachment two. That actually does show it. It's in very fine gray print. You can kind of see it if you look very closely. They're not proposing on grading in the 100-year floodplain. It is delineated in both the PDP and in the drainage study that the city has reviewed.
Very good, thank you. So there is no anticipated grading or changes to the grade of the portion that is in the 100-year floodplain, correct?
That is correct. And Chairperson Bossert, I do have an answer from John Van, and John's actually on the call with us about the rec. center. John, do you want to come on and speak about when it was completed?
Sure. My records are indicating the center was completed around 1990. A few years, not 1997. You can see, you can pick it up on aerial photos of that date before 1993, just to clarify that date.
David Tomacek.
Thank you, Chairman Bossert. I actually have two questions. Both of these would go to staff. The first one has to do with some assertions that were made by the applicants, and that is that there were promises or agreements made for the use of the land at the time that agreement was, or exchange was made for the land that the city properties on. Can you speak to those agreements, whether that's actually true or not? And I guess the following question would be, if those agreements were in fact made, how do they legally stand against the changes to the master plan?
Commissioner Tomacek, this is Kristin Decker, Deputy City Attorney. I'll answer that question for you. We have not been provided any agreements specific to land use approvals that have been granted in the past. What we are aware of is a court order granting certain access points to the property owner that was entered, is a court order entered into, I'm sorry, ordered on September in 1988. The purpose of that was to settle some litigation between the property owner and the city. And it did recognize certain access points that were showed in the applicant's presentation. I'll add one more thing on that. The order did recognize that the city cannot contractually waive its police powers. Police powers are those that protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city. So if the access points are deemed unsafe by the city, then the city does have the ability to restrict those. So what we are aware of is the order regarding the access points, but not anything specific to land use approvals for this property.
Okay, thank you. The other question I wanted to pose to staff has to do with many of the assertions that were made that the view was obstructed, or the gateway was obstructed, things like that. If this were just the convenience store and didn't have the gas pumps out front, would we be here having this discussion?
So Commissioner Tomacek, I can answer that question. So staff is not asserting that their development is going to block any sort of view corridor as shown by the comprehensive plan. The applicant did bring up the use of the language of mentioning Long's Peak and the view from Long's Peak. That was more to set the stage of what is the value of the city park facility? Why is it a public use? What are the assets of that public use? What are the attributes of that public use? So we do not believe that this would actually block the comprehensive plan-designated view corridor, and that's down 104th Avenue. The language of gateway in our agenda memo is specific to a letter we sent the applicant team in October of 2019, in which we told the applicant team that they were not going to have staff support for the proposal. That was where we originally used the term gateway. Gateway is not something that was specifically a term used by the comp. plan or such. It is staff's interpretation and finding that as you enter the city park facility, this is a primary gateway into city park facility, and this is half, if you can picture a gateway as two arches, this is half of the arch, and the other half is the city's property to the north.
Okay. Thank you.
Tracy Carley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question. It has to do with the staff report, and I'm hoping Jacob can answer this for me. In the history section on the staff report, there's some description in here that talks about the applicant was advised to prepare a new PDP in conformance with the city's current standards rather than submitting the PDP from 1992, which does not meet the current city standards. Is there a reason why the applicant did not submit a new one? I guess that's a question for the applicant. And then the second part of my question has to do with, the second part of that sentence, it says, "it doesn't meet the current city standards," and includes property that the property owner no longer owns. What is that in reference to?
Sure, Commissioner Carley, this is a specific point I actually wanted to bring up in the staff rebuttal time. So thank you for asking this question. I think it's a very good question. So the previous PDP that was approved in 1992 is considered expired by the city, specifically in section 11517 of the Westminster Municipal Code. We have a code requirement on the duration of plan approvals. PDPs are valid or good for a period of five years. And then, in order to keep the PDP good, you have to file an official development plan. That never happened for this PDP. There was never an official development plan approved afterwards. So the city finds this to be an expired PDP. It's no longer valid, and the zoning uses are no longer valid, and the city's no longer subject to that expired zoning. The question about why we didn't just allow them to resubmit the exact same PDP is because this PDP covered two pieces of land along Sheridan Boulevard. The one parcel in question is called Parcel B, and the other parcel is termed Parcel A, and that's actually north on Sheridan Boulevard, up at about the 108th entrance to where Legacy Ridge is, if you can kind of picture that traffic signal there. On the west side of Sheridan Boulevard, there's a property that, I'm going to look up the exact acreage, so I'm not quoting it wrong. It's 23.4 acres. The city is now the owner of that property. It's part of our city park facility. So in order to have them resubmit this PDP, the old PDP, the city would have had to join in as an applicant. And so that's why we directed them to just get a new PDP. It'll meet our formatting requirements, and it can clearly show just the parcel that's under consideration instead of the expired PDP.
Great. That helps. That helps a lot. Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate that.
Excuse me, Carolyn White, for the applicant. Was there a portion of that question that was addressed to the applicant, or did you get the answer that you were looking for?
Carolyn, I got the answer I was looking for. I guess I was wondering to know why you didn't just, I guess the question is to why you didn't just submit a new PDP then, if you knew, based on staff's recommendations.
Yeah, I might need to ask Erin for additional clarification, but we did submit a new PDP. That's what this is, a new PDP that's before you for only one of the parcels that was in the previous one. And we did it that way because staff told us we had to.
Okay, so it is a new PDP. So therefore, it falls under the new requirements of being compliant with the comp. plan. So it does have those standards. Okay, I think I understand now. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none. I will open the public hearing and ask Matt to allow one of the persons who would like to speak directly to the commission.
Actually, Chairperson Bossert, this is Jennifer. I will be moving that person over.
Okay.
And the speaker for this evening is Bill Carney. Bill, I have unmuted you, and you are free to begin your public testimony.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you. I prepared a statement with some notes in order to make this more efficiently. I want to thank the chairperson and the commissioners for this hearing. I'm William R. Carney, 303 LBJ Freeway in Dallas, Texas. I am a member of the Hewitt-Hawn family, who has owned this property since 1956. I have been directly involved since 1978. I married a Hawn whose grandmother was a Hewitt. Bill Hewitt, now deceased, moved to Denver after World War II, living in the Hampden University area. He served on the Cherry Hill City Council. Family roots are deep in Denver. This site is part of 750 acres owned by Hewitt and Hawn, annexed by Westminster in 1970. In 1982, the city condemned 70 acres of land for the new city park. They carved out of this site a six, this site of 6.9 acres on the northwest corner of 104th and Sheridan for commercial use to reduce the amount paid for the 70 acres. The 1985 federally funded widen in Sheridan Boulevard, the extension of 104th to US 36, and construction of the southern two lanes of 105th into the city park reduced the site, reduced the 6.9 acres to its present 5.6 configuration. The court order 85 CV 1405 of the roadway condemnation case provided access points to this site as part of the consideration. It is signed by the city's attorneys, the city and the city manager, Bill Christopher. In 1992, as part of the golf course, letter of intent, and development agreements, the city formally designated the site as retail commercial with allowed uses, including a quick-trip type facility. Our family donated 86 acres for the golf course, so the commercial classification and designation was exchanged as part of the 86-acre land donation. No tax deduction is allowed for donation. No tax deduction is allowed for donating land for a golf course. The rec center, the question came up, was completed before 1990. It was under construction in the late 80s. The comp plan was initiated five years after this agreement for the golf course and for the property, for the QuickTrip property. In recommending denial, the planning manager states, "If the application is denied, the goal of beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city is met by protecting a valuable public space from adverse impacts from the proposed uses of this property." Nowhere does she make any corals or just order statement. Our family owns the three of the four corners of 104th and Sheridan, so we would be the ones impacted, and we are endorsing this plan. If this is such a valuable public space, why hasn't the city acquired it in the past 39 years? By denying QuickTrip, the city keeps the site as open space with our family paying the property taxes. It's the old saying, "Why buy a cow when milk is free?" But it isn't free. There is no valid reason for the city to deny the QuickTrip use. And if the city wants to use the site for an extension of City Park, it should buy the property. QuickTrip will be a tremendous asset for the city. Surrounding convenience stores will either have to upgrade their facilities, products, and services, or close. My experience with QuickTrip is their facilities, inside and out, will be compatible and equal to the construction of the city's world-class recreation center. It will have expansive and cleaner restaurants, stores well-staffed with employees, and stocked with an extensive fresh inventory of food, drinks, and other items for everyone from the construction worker looking for a hot lunch to the office staffer needing fuel and a snack. Children and adults using the recreation center and surrounding sports fields and trails will find QuickTrip to be truly convenient. Our family strongly supports QuickTrip on this project and recommends the planning commission approve their plan. I would be glad to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, do we have any other people who wish to comment?
We do not.
And all of the other comments have been entered into the record either by email or by audio, voicemails?
That is correct. They were included in your packets.
Very good. Since we have completed all of the comment period, I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And if any commissioners have questions or would like to make a motion, now is the time to do that. Do we have a commissioner who would like to make a motion on this?
Chairperson Bosher, this is Jennifer. I apologize for interrupting. I'd like to clarify, there were also no voicemails received to be played into the meeting as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter. You're muted.
Well, isn't that not going to work? Let's try that again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of this preliminary development plan for QuickTrip Store Number 4201, based upon the criteria in the Westminster Municipal Code, Section 11-514, has been met.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that, Chairman Bosher.
Okay. Let me reiterate that we are voting to approve if we vote for this amendment. Is that correct?
That was my motion. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to say a few things, if that's okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, great. So first off, I think I totally get both positions on this. But in the end, that we have discretion that this is a may. I believe that this is harmonious. Number one, because we are at the intersection of 104th and Sheridan, two major thoroughfares. So this site has obviously remained dormant since the rec center's been there. And I don't know how long, 30 years is long enough to wait until something goes in there? I totally get the property owner's concern that he's paying taxes for what is effectively city open space. That's a major thing. So I can go through in more detail. I will say that, and this, I will say that I would really prefer to see the three accesses, not four. I question, I guess, I guess I question the western access being a full movement. I think three-quarter would be more appropriate. And on 104th, I mean, and the other 104th, I don't know that that right-in, right-out is necessary, but I'm sure that in, that there could be traffic studies generating that. The other thing I'd like to see, especially if we get an ODP on this project, is we have that subway under Sheridan that has the public sidewalk. And I would like to see either another underpass under the entrances or some way to direct pedestrian traffic towards the City Park facility without being in conflict with the motor vehicles. Otherwise, this, I don't know. If you don't put a, otherwise, if you don't put a gas station at the corner of two major, at the intersection of two major thoroughfares, I don't know where you would put a gas station. So that's my three cents. I'll love to hear what other people have to say.
I'd like to make a quick comment. Let me make this real quick, Tracy, and then I'll call on you. I use this intersection five days a week, and I have to say that I am very concerned that these entrances and exits will be a traffic conflict from the day it starts. I do not believe that this intersection is a good place for increased slow traffic to try and merge with high-speed traffic. And I believe it will create many traffic conflicts. And so I'm therefore going to vote against this motion. Okay, Tracy.
I'm going to get my camera on.
Hey.
There we go. Okay. Thank you, Jim, Commissioner. I wanted to say that I will be voting not to approve it. And I just want to say that I think it's really important that when the city of Westminster establishes a comprehensive plan, that we are consistent with that plan, because that's what was agreed upon. And that PDPs need to be in compliance with those, and I do not believe that it is. For criteria one, non-compliance with the comp plan, I do not believe that these uses, it's very clearly laid out, may not be allowed in areas directly adjacent to public and quasi-public open spaces or public spaces. I think that's very important. I think we need to be consistent with that. That's my main reason for not approving this, for being in agreement with approving this. I think that that's really important, that we stay in compliance with that. And I am also concerned with the traffic. Not the traffic, it's just the access points they're recommending, that access full-turn movement that they're pushing for on 104th. That spacing between 104th, between Sheridan, that seems very close to me. I'm obviously a traffic engineer. I would love to hear the city's traffic engineer weigh in on that. But regardless, that's not the main reason. The main reason is non-compliance. And I think just because you have two arterial roads that intersect, that doesn't mean you can just put a gas station or a convenience store anywhere. I think it's important that parts of the city that do have two major roadways come together, that doesn't automatically mean that you could put a convenience store on every corner. And that's why we do a comp plan, so that we have a plan for the city and that we identify areas where we want more density or different kinds of nodes. And this is not one of those places. So I will be voting no. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carley. Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to make my voice heard in the no category on this vote as well. I think basically what did it for me, besides the traffic concerns that the chairman brought up in this section of the debate, I would also like to point out one simple matter. And that is the QuickTrip, I'm sorry, development. During their presentation, they gave us a definition of compatibility, meaning that it's not the same, but that compatibility shows, and I quote, "sensitivity of development in maintaining the character of the surrounding development." This does not do that. And that is one of the basic reasons that I will be voting no. The other, like I said, is the traffic right around that intersection is going to cause havoc, I believe, as well. So for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Anyone else wish to speak on this motion? Commissioner Mayo.
Yeah, both sides made a good compelling argument. And I was kind of feeling myself getting pulled both directions. But it always, to me, it always came back to that expired zoning and the comp plan issues. I think that's two gates that we need to get resolved, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayo. Any further comment? Seeing none, I will call the question. Jennifer, do I need to call the roll, or do you do it?
I will do it. Chairperson Bosher.
Okay. I vote no.
Chairperson Bosher is not in favor. Vice Chair McConnell.
Oh, yes.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter.
I am in favor, yes.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Carley.
No.
Commissioner Carley is not in favor. Commissioner Dunn.
No.
Commissioner Dunn is not in favor. Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo.
No.
Commissioner Mayo is not in favor. Vote is complete.
So the motion fails on a three-to-four vote? Would another commissioner like to propose further motion? Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can just find the proper language here. Mr. Chairman, I move at this time that the planning commission recommend that the city council deny the PDP for the subject property on the grounds that the application does not meet the approved criteria, and more specifically, the city's comprehensive plan.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Mayo, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question.
Chairperson Bosher.
I vote yes on this motion.
Chairperson Bosher is in favor. Vice Chair McConnell.
I vote no.
Vice Chair McConnell is not in favor. Commissioner Carpenter.
I vote no. Or yes, I vote no. Sorry. I got confused for a second.
Commissioner Carpenter is not in favor. Commissioner Carley.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Carley is in favor. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek.
I vote no.
Commissioner Tomacek is not in favor. Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Vote is complete.
Okay, the second motion passes on a four-to-three vote. Therefore, we are recommending denial of the PDP for this applicant. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Carley.
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment.
There was a presentation that was done at the beginning by, I did not write his name, I think it was Mike Talcon. And he talked about the QuickTrip and kind of the culture of the company. And, you know, all the, it sounds like a wonderful employer. I just want to send the message that I don't think that we're against QuickTrip. I think that it sounds like a great company. I like to find someplace in Westminster for it to go, but I just don't feel like this is the right location. So I hope that if this doesn't get approved through the city council, you will continue to look for other locations to find a home in Westminster.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words.
Then.
And I would like to echo those comments myself. QuickTrip seems like a very high-quality company. We would love to have you in Westminster, but I think this was not quite the right fit. Thank you. Moving on, is there any old business? I do have a question for staff. Will we be seeing the Tap &amp; Burger development? Or has that already been approved?
Mr. Bosher, did you say Tap &amp; Burger?
Yes, it's a new restaurant chain coming to Westminster this spring. And I wondered if they've already been through the process with the planning or if they will come before the planning commission.
Okay. I haven't heard of this development yet. That might mean that they may be entering an existing building or existing development. And in that case, I may be reviewing a business license, and I'll keep you posted if I see anything.
Okay. I just read an article in today's Denver Post that they're going in at 88 Okay, I just read an article in today's Denver Post that they're going in at 88th and, oh, I don't know the cross street, right close to the.
Chairperson Bascher, this is Andrew Sargent. I can answer that question.
Okay.
Um, that is going in the downtown development at the former mall site. And so the ODPs in downtown are administratively approved pursuant to the specific plan district that was approved and created for downtown.
Okay, great, thank you. I just thought I'd ask, sounded like a very interesting development. Any miscellaneous business that any commissioners would like to speak up? It looks like there are no comments, so I am going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you for your help, staff. You did a great job.
Thanks, Jim. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, take care.